The 10th, and this is the City of Independence Planning Commission Meeting. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would you like to call the roll?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Present.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Chairman Wiley.
Here.
All right. Consent agenda, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion when we approve the minutes or consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, I will call for vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait. You missed one.
Oh. Commissioner Ferguson. Sorry.
Yes.
All right, and the consent agenda passes seven to zero. All right. Like to take a point of privilege, and we'd like to move our agenda a little bit out of order, so I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move case 25400-05, short-term rental for 14901 East Fortieth Street South, up to next.
Okay. I have a first or I have a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded, I'll give that to Pepe there. Commissioner Torres. All right. Any discussion? All right, everyone's good to move it? All right, I will go ahead and ask for a vote.
We can't have any questions or anything. You'll have your opportunity. All right. I'm calling for a vote on the motion.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes seven to zero. So let's go ahead and get started with case 25400-05. Just for those of you that are new to the Planning Commission, I'm Chairman Laurie Dean Wiley. We will ask you to go ahead if you plan to speak, you think you might speak, what somebody else asked might prompt you to speak. We need to go ahead and ask you to stand right now. Do you promise to do your best to speak to the commission tonight?
Yes.
Just if you will, say yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. All right. So what we'll do is we will have basically a report on the case at hand. We will discuss it, and then it'll be open to an open hearing, and at that time, anyone that has sworn and wants to speak, you'll be able to have your chance to do that. All right. Staff?
Yes, this is application 25400-5. The applicant Hannah and Timothy Mullins request approval of a short-term rental for the property located at 14901 East Fortieth Street South. The property is located generally in the southern southwest region of the city limits. Here is a map indicating notification area as required by city code. The zoning and area history of the subject site, this is a single-family neighborhood surrounded by properties of similar characteristics, design, and age. The nearest short-term rental is located well above the 500-foot site separation requirement as required by city code. This particular property is described as Lot 349 of the Stewart Heights East subdivision. The lot is generally 8,500 square feet in size. Real estate records indicate that the existing structure encloses approximately 1,800 square feet of living area. The dwelling consists of three bedrooms located on the main level, and the lot features a double-wide driveway and enough street parking for one additional vehicle, meeting the city's requirements for parking. A floor plan was submitted along with the application indicating the three bedrooms, living room area, dining room, kitchen, and the double-wide driveway. Staff does recommend approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions: the short-term rental shall obtain a business license pursuant to Chapter 5 of the city code; the short-term rental operator shall remit transient guest tax to the city and comply with operational standards outlined in Article 3, Chapter 5 of city code; the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14424 of the city code; the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six persons total; the maximum number of bedrooms shall be three; a noise monitoring system conforming to city code shall be installed and activated; the Good Neighbor Guidelines evacuation plan and other notices must be properly posted prior to approval of this business license; and lastly, the property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
You say it's got almost 1,800 square feet of living space, is that correct?
Yes, that's what recent real estate records have indicated. The house is a split level, so the main living level, you have a stairway to go up. So I'm assuming that they probably included portions of the basement in that calculation as well.
So we know there's no bedrooms in the basement?
As far as staff are aware, there are no bedrooms in the basement that the applicant has indicated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to invite the applicant to come forward. And before you speak, if you would state your name and your address.
My name is Hannah Mullins. My address is 14901 East Fortieth Street South, Independence, Missouri 64055.
All right. What would you like the commission to know about your short-term rental?
So first off, I'd really like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Again, my name is Hannah Mullins, and my husband Timothy and I are the homeowners of 14901 East Fortieth Street South here in Independence. Unfortunately, Timothy wasn't able to make it here today as he's been called to work in Texas. However, he is in full support of everything I'm about to share. This is our primary residence. We live here full-time, however, we will not occupy the residence during the short-term rental. Our names are on the deed, our personal belongings are in the home. We do not own any other properties. We maintain full responsibility and oversight of the home. According to the Missouri Revised Statute 137.016, residential property includes homes that are owner-occupied, with six or fewer rooms to rent, as long as the property is not primarily used for transient housing. Since this is our primary residence and we remain in control of the property at all times, it qualifies as residential property under state law. We have also taken several proactive steps to ensure we would be responsible neighbors. While these steps are in progress, here's what we have planned. We will post the City of Independence Good Neighbor Guidelines inside our home, where they will be visible to all guests. We will include these guidelines in our rental agreement, which every guest will review and sign before staying. We will install privacy-respecting noise-monitoring devices to ensure that quiet hours are respected and upheld. We already have purchased a privacy fence, which we will be constructing very soon to add visual boundaries and further protect the privacy of our neighbors. We have proactively contacted our immediate neighbors, providing them with our contact information, and let them know we're just five minutes away staying with family and ready to respond immediately if any issues arise. In addition to these steps we are taking, we received multiple signed letters of consent from our closest neighbors, a letter of approval from a member of our homeowners association, a written letter from our mortgage servicer supporting the responsible use of our property. I would also like to clarify a legal point regarding the HOA bylaws. If any provisions of the HOA governing documents contradict state or local laws, state and city laws take precedence. According to Missouri law, if there is a conflict, city and state laws supersede HOA bylaws. The state law allows us to use our property as we have described it, and that right would take precedence over any HOA restrictions that might conflict with it. Additionally, I would like to share the many positive impacts that responsible short-term rentals like ours bring to the neighborhoods. Increase property maintenance. Short-term rental homes are often better maintained, cleaned regularly, and kept in great condition for both guests and neighbors. Enhance neighborhood safety. The frequent presence and monitoring of guests discourages crime and ensures the area stays safe and well-lit. Boost local economy. Guests like to shop at nearby stores, dine at local restaurants, and support small businesses keeping money in the community. Tourism dollars stay local. Money spent by visitors support local services and businesses, enriching the area. Strong city revenue. Airbnb guests contribute through lodging taxes that directly support city infrastructure and services. Community pride. Visitors leave positive reviews about the area, building local, and encouraging others to explore Independence. Positive word-of-mouth. Guests often talk about their stay on positive terms, enhancing the reputation of the neighborhood. Less strain on long-term housing. Our home remains available for short-term rental and does not take away from the long-term rental market. Emergency housing flexibility. Our home could provide a temporary solution for family and/or people in need, such during medical visits and urgent travel situations. I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone who has come here today in support of our home-sharing endeavor. Your presence means so much to us, and we truly appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion with you all. We are deeply committed to being responsible neighbors and ensuring our home remains peaceful and a well-kept part of the community. We are not trying to disrupt or commercialize our neighborhood. We simply want to share our home in a way that aligns with both state and local laws while respecting the values of the people around us. Thank you again for your time, consideration, and support. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I've got a little problem here. I don't know, Gabe, did we not get a copy of her application in our packet? I don't see one. Am I missing it? Well, my question is, is that her application address is 16,000 East 25th Street. She said her address is 14901. What's this 16,000 East 25th Street? I mean, either one of you can answer.
Myself. Yeah, that is my, oh, sorry.
You can answer.
That's actually the family members' residence that we'll be staying at, and I wasn't sure if mail would go there, so I wanted to proactively put that address.
Okay, because I mean, that's an error that I see if it's not properly on the application, correct?
I will have to look into that. That's a good question, and maybe I can defer to Rick in this case. So because the city uses a program, RentalScape, to process short-term rental applications, that's why a traditional planning and zoning application form is not submitted along with the case, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then my other question's going to be to staff, probably. Would this not fall under something besides short-term rental, like, I can't remember what we call the other ones where they have, they open up their house to people?
Yeah, I can actually speak to that as well. That's a good question. And to be perfectly transparent, staff was not aware that the owner would occupy the property. But the provision in city code states, so this would be Section 14424, 12, Paragraph 12, "A short-term rental operator shall not live in the short-term rental unit when the unit is rented." So if the operator-owner is vacated the premises and makes the unit available for bookings, then the classification will still fall under short-term rental. Otherwise, if the short-term rental operator-owner resides in the premises while it's being rented, then that would fall under the classification of a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Now, one additional thing to note here, and I apologize, I missed it in the presentation. I did want to take a moment to advise Planning Commission of a formal legal protest petition that has been signed by 12 residents and satisfied the provisions of city code, stipulating that tonight's vote constitutes solely a recommendation. So Planning Commission does not have the authority to approve the short-term rental application tonight. It will advance to city council, whichever way that Planning Commission votes.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant?
Chair.
Yes.
So is it 1,800 square feet house?
It is, but we are only, the basement half is not being utilized, it's being locked off.
Okay, so it is locked off.
Yes.
That's why I just wanted to verify.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, at this time, I would ask anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case to please come forward. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? All right, did you swear in?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Callie Edwards, and my address is 14904 East Fortieth Street South, Independence, Missouri 64055.
What would you like us to know about your support?
I would just like to say that I know the homeowners personally, and I do know that they will take care of this property well. I appreciated the letter that they did give out to everybody that was nearby with their contact information, letting them know a little bit about what they're going to be doing, and letting us know that we're able to reach out at any time if we see anything that concerns us, I should say. But I do feel that they're going to take care of this property well. I've stayed at Airbnbs a lot. Typically, their standards are very high. I know they're going to be like, really having to stay on top of mowing their yard, all that stuff, more than maybe a typical resident. So I fully support that for many of those reasons.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the case? All right, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Megan Sterko. My address is 14908 East Fortieth Street South. I'm also in the notification area. I'm in full support of the Airbnb. I just met Hannah recently, but with having conversations with her and her husband, I fully trust there will be no issue with them running an Airbnb part-time. I understand that there is typically a vetting process for guests to stay at an Airbnb, and I think that will definitely help ensure that we're not having random people or, you know, crime, people who are committing crime. I'm not worried about that in our area. I've stayed at Airbnb several times as well, and I know as a guest myself that I'm careful where I stay to make sure that I keep, you know, good case of the house, that we're cleaning up after ourselves, and I think a lot of people who go on family vacations, or if there are small parties at the place, that they're going to be careful to clean up after themselves. I'm glad to hear that there will be a privacy fence as well. I know a lot of these Missouri fences, you can see right through that chain link, so I think that will help with privacy and keeping the neighbors' privacy safe as well. Not really a whole lot else to say, but I don't have any issue with that happening right near my home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else who would like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none, anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this case? Thank you. State your name and your address.
Sharon Jessen, 4229 South Stateon Avenue, Independence, Missouri 64055.
All right, but would you like us to hear?
Well, first of all, one person on the board does not have the authority to say that this is something she can do. And also, it does state that in our bylaws that our homes are for residential purposes. And according to the city code, the short-term rental is considered commercial, and we're not licensed for commercial. There's also a concern of a traffic issue with parking, parking on the street. It's possible that there could be issues with trash service, and I oppose it.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Ma'am, did you swear in?
I don't think so. I got here just a little bit late.
Okay.
What do you need to do?
Just, basically, do you promise to share with us the truth as far as you know it?
Yes, ma'am.
And just say, "I do."
Yeah, I do.
Thank you very much. Just state your name and your address.
My name is Chris Goble. My address is 4001 Crane Avenue. I actually live right behind them. Are we allowed to ask a few questions as well?
Not, just tell us your questions and what you think, and then we will...
First off, I knew the people that owned that house prior to them. I do know the fact that that house is not 1,800 square feet at all. It's about half that size on the livable. And livable is all you can actually count in this square footage. I was in the mortgage industry for over 20 years. Second of all, to be quite honest, they're nice people, don't get me wrong, but they don't keep their property up. There are overgrown weeds growing up the power pole in the back of the yard, almost to the top, coming over into my yard. I haven't cut them down yet because I did take pictures. My main concern, more or less, is the issue with possible parties. Airbnbs have been noted, especially in the greater Kansas City area, to host parties. Had a neighbor on the other side of me that did that, and that house is now a nuisance house. So that's my main concern, is that there is a possibility in traffic, if there's going to be six people in that house and six cars, because a lot of times people come separately, if it's like for family reunions and stuff like that, there is not adequate parking. They would all have to park, most of them would have to park in the street, or block the sidewalks, which is supposedly, my understanding, not allowed in Independence, you're not supposed to park back far enough to where you block the sidewalks. But my main concern is more or less, if there is issues with the house, can we deem it a nuisance, like for rental properties? So that's more or less, and I understand that people need to make money if they can't afford their mortgage, but you also have to make sacrifices to afford what you're required to pay.
We will get answers to your questions during our hearing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and call the applicant back up. All right, based on what you heard, anything you would like to tell us about parties or parking, things like that? Just listening to some of the concerns.
So, parties are strictly prohibited against Airbnb policy, and because, and another point, this is my only home, my first home, I care actually very deeply about that home, and I don't want parties there either. And there will be a no-party policy allowed, and I will be allowed to come over there and remove them if they do not align with my guidelines, per Airbnb's policy. I can come five minutes down the road, I'm not some investor who lives hundreds of miles away. So I would be happy, more than happy, to, you know, come and take care of any issues. The weeds that are overgrown on the power pole, I actually have contacted, I have a mower guy that comes once a week, so I actually do take care of my property. I actually have proof that I have a mower guy that comes and takes care of my property. I did not know if I was allowed to touch the power pole, because I've heard that's very unsafe. I genuinely hadn't looked into that, but if it's a concern of my neighbor, I actually do care, and I wouldn't mind taking that down, but I didn't think it was safe to touch power poles. As far as I'm aware, the first person who spoke on the stand actually lives very far away from my residence, so I'm not really sure how that concerns her. And then, if I could recap some of the concerns, can somebody touch on something else that somebody else had a concern, my mind's kind of going places.
No, go ahead.
Parking? We did implement a parking plan per the city's request, and we would be happy to, you know, have an open discussion about how many cars are allowed if that's a concern as well. But I don't think it'll be a problem, because we only have six people, and generally, at least two per car, so I don't see it as being a problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any additional questions from anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes, I visited the property this afternoon, and my impression was that there was space in the driveway for four cars. Is that not correct?
No, that is correct. There's space for four cars, per city guidelines, there's four parking spots.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Chair.
Yes.
Due to the four-car parking, like one of the people said, that if you parked the second car back-to-back, you blocked the sidewalk, and that's part of the restrictions in Independence not to block sidewalks.
There's no sidewalk.
No, there's sidewalk. Of course, we didn't see any pictures, but I swore there were sidewalks in pictures I seen.
Gabe, do you know if there's sidewalk?
I'm checking right now, actually.
Could I also clarify while you're, or just ask a question while you're looking? This particular location was not acting in any way as a short-term rental prior to their application, is that correct?
That's correct. There's no live listing.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, is it okay to ask questions now, or is that later?
Later. You need to ask your questions as you speak, so I have not closed the hearing. So go ahead and state your name again, and then what is it that you have questions about?
Megan Sterko. And I was just thinking, as sitting there, I would be happy if there's any kind of process to offer our driveway as additional parking, if there's an approval process for that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, we're kind of discussing some of the parking concerns, and so there is a sidewalk in front of the house. However, if cars don't block the sidewalk, then it wouldn't be considered a violation of city code. Additionally, there is a garage on the site, so depending on the operations... So depending on the operations of the short-term rental, if the operator permits parking in the garage, that would be acceptable as well. One thing to note is there is no provision in city code to permit off-site parking for short-term rentals. So we would have to go back and look at it, but at this time, parking arrangements would not be permitted. So specifically, off-street parking in the driveway, and allotted street parking, based on frontage.
Can you go ahead and clarify, or just restate the number of parking spaces required?
Yes. So, Independence City Code has a parking requirement outlined in Section 14424, pertaining to the Use Regulations for Short-Term Rentals, and one parking space is required per bedroom. So a total of three parking spaces is required for a three-bedroom short-term rental.
All right, thank you very much. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. Commissioners, any further discussion?
Chair, just as a point of clarification, according to Zillow, the property has 1,424 square feet above ground and 375 below.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion if no additional comments.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of Case 25-400-05, Short-Term Rental at 14901 East 40th Street South.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
All right, I have a second from Commissioner Ferguson. Any further discussion? All right. I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes. And the motion passes seven to zero on the short-term rental. Good luck, and be a great neighbor. Yes, it's a recommendation only, because there is a protest. So you'll get to repeat for approval at the city council meeting. Do we have a date for that, Rick, or Gabe?
We'll have to look into that. And I spoke with the applicant earlier today, so we'll get a date set as soon as possible.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Case Number 251013, rezoning of 15430 and 15440 East US 24 Highway. And staff, look forward to your report.
Okay.
Give us just a moment while the room clears. All right, sir.
Okay, again, this is Case 25113. Applicants Joanna and Chris Bagby, and John T. and Laura J. Yohi, for the two lots at the southwest corner of 24 Highway on Salisbury. That's 15430 and 15440 East US 24 Highway. Request to rezone the property, the two properties that currently have two zonings, C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential, to entirely R6 Single Family Residential. As you can see from the map up top, or in front of us, it's where I, US 24 crosses Salisbury, not too far from 291 there. The background and zoning history of this property and their proposal. This property was annexed in 1955. It doesn't have a standard plat. It had a commissioner's plat, which was not done through the city. When zoning was adopted in 1965, these properties were designated C3 Commercial and R1 Single Family Residential. In 1980, they were relabeled C2 General Commercial and R1B Single Family Residential. In 2009, when we created our Udo, the residentially-zoned portions were renamed R6 Single Family Residential. And as you can see from the directional I have here, north, south, and east of the property are all C2 zonings. So it's kind of confusing. 24 Highway is an east-west highway, but in this area, it's running north and south. So to the north, you're talking across Salisbury, you have a single-family residence. To the south, also zone C2, you have a car wash. And then to the east, there's a cemetery and a recently constructed office building to the south of that. And then to the west, we have R6 Single Family Residences and other residential residences through that neighborhood. So the applicants are seeking to rezone these two residential lots to eliminate the legal nonconformity, and to ensure the residences can be rebuilt if something catastrophic happens, as well as to eliminate any encumbrances with financing or refinancing the properties. So again, here's the zoning map. You can see that most of the property is within that commercial corridor that was established along the highway. But the rears of the property are residential, and this does about a residential neighborhood, which is why our comprehensive plan envisions that to remain that way as residential, as indicated on this drawing. And this is the notification area. So all the properties that are within 185 feet of these two that received a notice. Background, as far as the physical characteristics of the property and the characteristics of the area. The two red-and-white brick residences date, both date to around the 1950s. And they have large setbacks on deep lots that are wooded in their rear. The Bagby property is at the corner and has access to its back with a gravel driveway off Salisbury. The Yohi property is accessed exclusively from a broken-up asphalt driveway that comes off US 24. This commercially-zoned district encompasses both, in the area, encompasses both their residential and commercial uses along the 24 Highway corridor. Residents along this semi-commercial corridor vary in era, from the 1900s to the 1960s. And the homes in this area are quite different in size and design. And they, of course, are all on these generally-deep wooded lots. And there are, though there are some still commercial uses there scattered along the corridor, like, of course, the car wash that's immediately to the south and the office building across the street. So here's an aerial view of the property. You can see the corner lot with its gravel driveway. And then the lot to the south that has access there off 24. So as far as analysis, this proposal conforms with Independence's strategic plan objectives to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. As far as meeting the comprehensive planning tools in the, for the comprehensive plan, the Imagine Independence Comprehensive Plan 2040 envisions the area to be, like I showed earlier, residential-established neighborhoods. And this portion of this policy is to support the protection and preservation of properties. Sub-area plans, these properties are not located with any area that's been identified for a sub-area. Zoning, of course, R6 Single Family zoning is, classification allows single-family dwellings as well as assortment of uses like churches, schools, government uses, daycare. Currently, the property's R-zone C2, which of course includes office retail uses, service uses, auto repair, restaurants. As far as historic and archaeological sites, there are no apparent historic or archaeological issues with these properties. And of course, all utilities are already in place in these existing homes. And this area is not in an area that has, in a federal floodplain, or, nor is it designated stream buffer area by the city. We didn't end up identifying any CIP investments, but MoDOT currently has plans for future road improvements. I've used, as you've seen the progress of them improving 24 Highway that would continue east past this property. So here are the photographs of the two houses. So the one on the corner is the one on the right, and then the next-door neighbor. And you can see part of the car wash there on its left. And then this is the intersection of Salisbury. So we're looking eastbound on 24, which is north, and then westbound on 24, which is south. And staff recommends approval of this rezoning case, and I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Brian. So clarification, not real sure, maybe just history, but this is to correct the zoning to the right zoning, that it should have always been?
Yeah, one of many that we've been working on and will continue to work on.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Any additional questions for staff? All right, is the applicant here? Just state your name and your address.
I'm actually, I'm Amanda Kivitt. I'm Ms. Bagby's attorney. My work address is 1600 Genesee Suite 635, Kansas City, Missouri 64102. Ms. Bagby unfortunately is out of the country. Both properties were owned by her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Yohi. They purchased them in the 80s. Their hope was that their daughter and son-in-law would live in the house next door to them. That did not happen. Mr. and Mrs. Bagby actually live, or Dr. and Mrs. Bagby actually live on the Kansas side. But Ms. Bagby stayed at the home for the last three or four years while her parents were ill, and then they eventually passed away in 2024. She was not aware that there was any zoning issue until she attempted to sell one of the properties in 2025. And then there were concerns by the purchaser, as well as insurance, as to whether or not, if there was to be a fire, that the property could be rebuilt. Currently, one property has closed for sale. And I believe that purchaser is here and is still wanting the property to be rezoned so that they can keep their single-family residence classification. And they are living there, and they do have a minor child, and so they want that. The other property is now a family friend is living there, and she's actually a teacher. And she's interested in purchasing it. But unless it's rezoned as single-family, she can't get the teacher a loan to purchase the property. So both of these, if we could just correct, would obviously keep really good families in your community and allow that if there were any fire damage, for there to be insurance to rebuild the property. So we're just asking that we correct this error and get rid of the legal nonconforming classification and zone them as single-family real estate.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this case? All right. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Case Number 25113.
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nesbit. All right. Any final discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes. And the motion passes seven to zero. Case Number 25113 for rezoning has been approved. All right, let's move on to the next case on the docket. Case Number 25114, rezoning at 11307 Aaron Lane.
So the applicant, Mitchell Smith, requests to rezone the subject site located at 11307 East Aaron Lane, from I1 and R12 to Single Family Residential R6. The subject site is located generally in the northern, northwestern region of Independence. The southeast corner of Truman Road and Sterling Avenue. It's a dead-end street, Aaron Lane. Notification area map indicating the property owners who receive notification. Zoning and area history of the subject site. So the subject site is bisected by two separate zoning district classifications, I1 on the north and R12 on the south. To the north of the subject site is a vacant commercial site with a building and a vacant lot on the west. Additionally, there is an existing two-family residential dwelling located to the north, northeast. It's currently occupied. To the east of the subject site is another single-family residence with that dual zoning classification. To the south of the subject site is an R12 zoning district. And that's a residential subdivision. Several different subdivisions recorded south of the subject site. To the west of the subject site, again, is a single-family residence, same scenario. It's two separate zoning classifications, I1 and R12. I've highlighted the property on the aerial image on the screen here. This is Lot 5 of the Pleasant View subdivision. It's about 6,000 square feet in size, the lot itself. The lot has a southerly aspect sloping down in the rear. And the southern property line encroaches into a stream buffer. So it's a creek that traverses Crisp Avenue just to the west. So that stream buffer prevents any grading or... There is stream buffer mitigation requirements as required by city code. The existing structure is about 687 square feet in size. And it is tagged dangerous. And a residential repair building permit application has been submitted. That's under review. And the building permit is pending approval of the rezoning. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning, and that concludes the presentation.
So it's been a dangerous building, and somebody's willing to rehab it for us?
That's correct.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? All right, I invite the applicant to come forward. State your name and your address. And if you want to move that mic up to the top of the podium there.
My name is Cody Lamming. My home address is 8509 Booth Avenue in Raytown, Missouri. I am the general contractor, project manager of this undertaking of rezoning and finishing this house to be a livable product, once again.
All right, just speak up just a little bit, please. And what do we need to know about this?
As of right now, we are just looking to get approval for the rezoning from the planning commission. So we may move on to the city council as of July 21st, I think. And then hopefully, we can meet... hopefully we can meet all your guys' requirements, and we can get this back into being a livable home and not a disrepair priority for you guys to demolish. From what I was to understand, we have received notices that it was on the list to be demolished, and he was very adamant about not wanting that to happen, so we took on the project for the client.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or for the contractor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in attendance that'd like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. I'm not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. Any additional comments or questions to staff? Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
If I don't have questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Please, I will entertain that.
I'd like to move approval for case 25-100-14 rezoning of 11307 Aaron Lane.
I have a first, do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Nesbit? All right. And any final discussion? All right, I'll ask for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero for case number 25-1014 for rezoning of 11307 Aaron Lane. Good luck.
Thank you very much. We don't need luck, we're amazing at our job.
All right, I love that. Well, congratulations then. Look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, sure. Hopefully you can see us on another ones. I'd love if you worked in the city.
All right. You too. All right, let's move on to case number 25-2006 for a special use permit. Which staff member is presenting on this one?
Val Miegan.
All righty.
This is an application submitted by Jeremy Mundon for special use permit approval to operate a convenience store without fuel sales at 104 East Lexington Avenue. It's just southeast of the Jackson County Historic Courthouse. Here's a notification area map and some zoning and area history. So this subject site is in the historic square, surrounded by general commercial zoning classification, and to the north is an office space, to the east is City Hall, the south is general retail, and again, to the west is Jackson County Historic Courthouse. The comprehensive plan map envisions this area for mixed-use residential and commercial. And property characteristics of the subject site, this property is currently being used as for mixed-use residential purposes, so it has commercial suites on the ground level, and it has a total of four residential dwelling units above ground level, at least according to city records. This is part of the original plat of the old town of, or, sorry, excuse me, the Town of Independence, recorded in 1827. The parcel itself contains about 1,988 square feet of area. The site is comprised of a three-story building containing a mix of commercial and residential uses. The building is basically the whole lot, so there's very little side or rear yard. The proposed convenience store will be located in existing commercial space with no interior or exterior modifications besides adding some shelving for display of goods, some refrigerators, and a soda fountain. Here's a floor plan of the commercial space, so you can see here, the top of the floor plan is a counter where the soda fountain will be located. You've got a couple refrigerated coolers with doors or sliding doors, and you can access or get your refrigerator grocery items, and then those merchandise shelves for convenience store items. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. The applicant must comply with all use regulations as prescribed by Section 14426. The applicant must obtain a certificate of occupancy for the commercial space in accordance with Section 14708 of the City Code and comply with all requirements of the building official. The applicant must obtain and maintain an Independence business license in accordance with Chapter 5 of the City Code. And lastly, the applicant must obtain and maintain an Independence health permit in accordance with Chapter 11. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? I have one. Convenience store, probably needed for some local groceries there, however, what constitutes it? Is there a percentage, cigarettes, alcohol?
Yes, so convenience stores are generally defined by the sale of limited grocery items, consumer goods. In addition to that, they are permitted to sell alcohol and tobacco. At this time, the applicant has not indicated the sale of alcohol, so prepackaged liquor. If the applicant at a future time does want to engage in the sale of intoxicating liquor, they would have to apply for a separate license, and that would have to be approved by City Council as well. Similar process where notifications are sent out. In regards to tobacco sales, the city is at its maximum capacity for smoke shops, however, incidental sales of tobacco-related products, so loose tobacco, cigarettes, vapes, they can constitute a minority of the sales of the business activity. So there are some safeguards in place. While this will be a convenience store engaging in the sale of limited grocery items, prepackaged foods, and so forth, consumer goods, and they can engage in a small percentage of their business activity can be in tobacco.
Since this building was already being used for commercial, special use permit is because of the, where it's located, the history, or the park, or?
Yeah, and that's a good question. So in this case, City Code stipulates that a convenience store must obtain special use permit approval when it's located within 500 feet of residential or parks, schools. In this case, it was residential along Kansas Avenue, I believe, that triggered the requirement. So it's a couple blocks away, but right within that 500-foot buffer requirement.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, any additional questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm a little confused about the location, looking at the maps and actually going out and looking at the property. Does this property face Main Street?
Yeah, that's a great question. So there is a commercial suite that faces Main Street. I believe that is called On the Square Nutrition is the current business occupant of that space. However, this commercial space is a little bit hidden. I had to go out and look for it myself. It's.
It actually faces Lexington.
That's correct. So the primary entrance to the commercial space is off of Lexington Avenue. There is a public sign, a public notice sign, excuse me, that has been affixed to the window of the commercial space.
So the diagram is actually not quite correct. It shows the property facing Main Street on one corner, so it actually doesn't go quite that far, so.
Yeah, and I could be, yeah, I would have to look into that. You may be correct, and the diagram may not be completely correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? All right. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this case? Oh, is the applicant here?
No.
State your name and address.
I'm Jeremy Mundon. I live at 8303 South Nolan Road, Kansas City, Missouri.
And what do we need to know about your project?
I mean, obviously, I'm trying to start a convenience store on the square to serve the square. It's really loud, sorry. But other than that, I'm.
Go ahead and leave it there. We have to have it on recording. Thank you.
But other than that, I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
All right. You know, in some groups, you have to do a little teapot if your phone goes off. All right, any questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
All right, anyone who'd like to speak for or against? Seeing no one else in the room, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I make a motion that we approve case number 25-200-06 special use permit.
I have a first.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Nesbit? All right, final discussion? All right, sir, I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes seven to zero for case number 25-200-06 special use permit. Good luck with that. When can we maybe see something there?
Does it have to go through another vote?
If we have to go before City Council, we're certain. The certificate of occupancy, it will be issued shortly after that.
So as soon as all that's approved, we're ready.
All right. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Now we are on to, I believe, our last case of the evening, a UDO for Amendment Number 73, case number 25-175-02. The illustrious Rick Aurora, everyone.
It appears that everybody left for the most exciting case.
That's why you didn't want to.
Yeah, exactly. So as you mentioned, Madam Chair, what you have before you and Commissioners is case 25-175-02, UDO Amendment Number 73, billboard setback requirements. As you know, we do occasionally go through our code to make sure that we have updates and make sure things are clear and concise. In this case, we've had some questions from individuals asking about some of our off-premise signs and advertisements and billboards, and we wanted to make sure that it was very clear as to how we do certain measurements from different properties. We do have specifications in our code that talks about measurements and gives specifications on how we do some of that. Further along in this particular section, we do have a separation requirement in how we do measurements, but we did feel it was important to clarify that in this particular section of the code, the 14406-03-C, how we measure off-premise advertising from areas such as churches and hospitals and residential and school properties. So we did add the language in there that you see, that the distance between the billboards and these uses will be measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures or properties from the closest property line to the closest property line. Again, this language is used throughout the code. We just wanted to make sure it was included here for clarity. And then, of course, we wanted to add churches, we do use churches, but it's actually religious assemblies, so we wanted to make that correction. And then to include that parks and recreation, includes parks and recreation, even areas that don't necessarily have, you know, typical park equipment. It could be open space, it could be trails, those are still considered parks. And so with that, I have no further information to provide, and I will take any questions you may have.
And Rick, was there a specific case that prompted all this clarification?
There was no specific case.
Okay. All right, any questions for staff? All right. All right, we have a question from Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Just curious, so it says, will be measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures or properties. So if, is this, yeah.
Correct.
So this isn't, does this apply to a billboard that's attached to the building, a building? Or is it just one that's freestanding out?
This would be more of like a freestanding billboard.
Okay.
Yep.
Does it say that in there?
This is just one section of the off-premise advertising, so there is a bigger section of 14406, and so, yeah, this would be more of like the billboards that you'll see along highways and things like that.
What's the definition of off-premise?
So it would be a sign that's not on somebody's property, basically. So it's an advertisement sign, not specifically on a specific property.
So like the right-of-way?
On the right-of-way, yeah, that type of thing.
Okay, well, that's, somebody owns that property, like the government, right?
Yes. Or somebody could own a piece of property.
I'll quit, I'll quit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just.
You're off the hook, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just advertisement that's off of a.
Obviously, they not have a lawyer, look at that.
Particular, particular property. But, yeah, the purpose of that is to make sure that we're not measuring distances around buildings or around property lines, but that's not what the intent is.
The distance is the distance.
The distance is the distance, yep.
All right. Any other comments? All right.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do then.
I'd make a motion to approve case 25-175-02, UDO Amendment Number 73.
All right, I have a second from Commissioner Torres. All right. No further discussion, then I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
No.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion passes six one. Case number 25-175-02, UDO Amendment Number 73. All right, that concludes our hearings for tonight. Anything for the good of the rest of the Planning Commission from any Commissioners? All right, I was made aware of probably a big case coming up in late August with Wally's. So just keep that in mind. And Pepe, sir, we will miss you in the month of July. We do have a meeting scheduled for late June now in our most recent schedule. And with that, anyone else? Thanks for being, Mitch, there is a thank-you gift over there with some snacks if they didn't share, so, all right. And with that, the meeting is called adjourned at 7:08 PM.